Good evening. I'd like to call the General Committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and the prayer?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interest of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Mr. Campbell, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Fote.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Creason?
Here.
Ms. Lee Bowman and Mr. Long are not with us. Ms. Lemoine?
Here.
Ms. Dysart?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yeah.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Fote. First item on the agenda is an Education Committee item. Mr. Warner?
Thank you, Mrs. Dysart. Item number 2.1, consideration of the 2024-2025 Nutrition and Physical Activity Wellness Policies. Mr. Morell, how are you today?
I am well.
Tell us about our wellness, nutrition and physical activity and wellness policy.
So, in the pamphlet that what I attached, everything, the first section is like a little PowerPoint I'll go over. It just highlights a lot of the wellness policy. So, I know we have talked before, but just getting started, it just goes over helping kids learn and grow and be healthy. So, together with, along with parents, staff, and everyone, we all basically play a huge part in making sure our kids grow and eat healthy. And then there are statistics and studies that have shown that kids that eat healthy always tend to be better students. They learn better, retain information, behave better in class. So, creating a healthy school environment in the wellness policy, it's broken down into different categories. It talks about the nutrition, education, physical activity, the marketing of foods, foods and nutrition promotion, foods and drinks, so will the students. So, kind of it'll break it all down, and it's like in categories in the wellness policy. On the next slide is, it just reiterates that making it's all a team effort, that, you know, teachers, the parents, the entire, like, school board, myself, the students themselves. It teaches about making good choices, whether it's fruits, vegetables, proteins, and grains. So, the Wellness Committee is actually comprised of a different couple of standards. So, starting like today, talking about the wellness policy and putting it into action. So, we'll start today with the committee, with the school board meeting, that's today. And then, and I'll go into detail in a few minutes about the questionnaire. But the school nutrition department, so that's myself, a couple of cafeteria members, the managers, we're gonna do a, kind of like a quiz or questionnaire, and we're gonna get all of that data. We're gonna meet in the beginning of January. That's January 10th of 2025. And then we'll do a Wellness Committee meeting on January 17th at Sherman Elementary in the Business Admin Center. The wellness policy is online on our website at SPPSP.org. Also, I did attach a copy of the wellness policy that's in there, also in the back of it. We do follow all federal and state requirements. That is, we make sure there's like two grains, for example, two grains with every meal, a fruit, a vegetable, they get milk and juice. That's all the federal regulations from the USDA. So, that's where we follow and get regulations of how we make menus and things like that. So, all of that's listed in the wellness policy also. So, the wellness policy for the school district, we, it encourages, basically through it all, you know, all of us to be a part of it. It'll touch on all of that stuff. It uses the meal preparation techniques. That's when I do like my, I go out in the field and I work with the managers to make sure, you know, we're not trying to like saute two pounds of onions and 10 pounds of butter. So, we don't do things like that. We make sure we are cutting the fat and calories back a little bit to make sure we're not overindulging, you know, that the kids overindulge. So, the importance of nutrition, education, and promotion, that is, like through posters and other, through educating the children, not touching, like, for an example, we get interns a few times a year. I work with North Oaks and with Tulane, so I have some, actually, this week and next week. We're creating posters and handouts, and they're gonna go to a couple of elementary schools, for example, and then during their cultural arts and PE, they would do some education in just trying to teach children what's really important, how to make good choices. So, that's that aspect of it, of making good nutrition, education, and promotion, good choices. The team nutrition resources, that's where we get a lot of the information from. We make posters, and then also, like I said, we rely a lot on, I get a lot of good information from the dietetic interns, because they're out in the field, they just graduated from college, they're in there and doing it. So, and that's where we really get a lot of feedback and a lot of good stuff, like to the children base from that. Physical activity, it's required or not required, it asks that kids or children get up to 60 minutes per day. Let them run around and, you know, stretch their legs a little bit. So, it's very, very important. So, and then food marketing, you're gonna see, I'll touch in on it in a second. There's like putting the big posters in the cafeterias, trying, and then making foods look presentable while they come through the line. You know, a lot of people eat with their eyes. If something looks appealing, it looks good, they're gonna anticipate the anticipation of that, it is good. So, taking the extra time to make sure, like, we have good, not like canned fruit, we have real fruit, apples, oranges. So, that's the whole part of food marketing, to make sure, and that's helping the children make great, healthy choices. And so, the public involvement is, so I'm working with Ms. Serapheld. In the beginning of October, or mid-October, we're gonna launch a questionnaire, a QR code, that parents and students can take, like, just a 10 to 12 questionnaire, like, you know, do they think the meal sizes are appropriate? Do we have, do you have enough time to eat? Because every child gets a minimum of 20 minutes just to sit down and eat throughout the day. That's their lunchtime. And then, just some questions like that, or their recommendations for menu changes. So, we're gonna do, we're gonna start that mid-October. That's gonna run through right before Christmas. And then that's when we're gonna gather that information through like a Google Doc, through Google Doc, and then we'll compile all that information. That's gonna happen on January 10th. That was that meeting that we talked about. And then the committee, which is myself, some of the managers, and then we've reached out to a lot of the physical education, the PE coaches, and to all attend. And then obviously, everyone here is invited also, and that's gonna be in January 10th. We can sit down and talk about the feedback from the children and from the public, and then incorporate that into our menu, and hopefully we can make the menu even a little bit better and more enjoyable for the children. So, so far this year, I can say that participation for in the cafeteria is up, especially I've noticed a lot in the middle school grades. So, that means it tells me, it tells me a couple of things, that they're looking forward for a nutritious meal. And then the previous years, all the elementary school cafeterias have been doing a great job of making sure the meals look good, they're presentable, and they're nutritious. In that way, the children, once they go to middle school, they're actually eating more. I mean, at one school, it's up at least almost 20%, 25% participation. So, I'm seeing like a huge jump, which is really, really good. Lastly, that's just my email. Also, my email is listed online, so any of, anyone in the public, parents, can contact me or email me directly. Quite a few of them do, so I do get back with them, and that's just diets and things like that. So, next you will see all these pages, the colorful sheets. That is a lot of the posters we're working on, putting up in the cafeterias. We're gonna, that's what I've been working with, with a couple of interns. Just really like kind of bright, colorful things to encourage the students to eat a lot of fruits and vegetables, even grains. You get a lot of nutritious factors from grains. And then obviously, the importance of staying hydrated, drinking water, and what it does for your body, digestion, and even like skin and vision and things like that. So, and then lastly, I did put a copy of the entire wellness policy at the back of that for you to review.
Thank you, Mr. Morell. Do we have any questions from board members? Mrs. Dysart?
Just one quick question, Mr. Morell. Under school wellness policies, elimination of food as a reward for student accomplishment?
What's that mean?
Under the school wellness policies, the last bullet point, elimination of food as a reward for student accomplishment? Is that a district?
No, it's just encourages that food should never be used as a reward for children, like whether for like good behavior or, because when a child does something, we should never reward them and give them food. Studies have shown that that is a leading cause of obesity. Like, if you do something well, I mean, just give you like a piece of chocolate, or even, and that just goes like across the board.
All of our behavior modification programs for the last 20 years have been viewed into this.
Right. Now, I could, I would encourage-
I remember, you know, pizza parties, popcorn parties.
Right. I would encourage that if we could do apples and oranges, right? We can encourage it. If we do apples and oranges and nuts and almonds and things like that, that would be great. But just in general, in good practices, you know, because I always remembered, you know, even my parents are like, "Oh, you wanna do something? Or you do a good job? Here's a, you know, you can go to the store and get a Snickers bar." That's not really, that's not healthy, and we shouldn't be doing that, rewarding good behavior with food. So, that's what, that's what that means.
I was just wondering if we, if we added that, or it's a national policy, or a district policy?
Yeah, just generally, it's not like, it's not good practice.
It's a good suggested practice.
Right. Now, if we wanted, like I said, if we wanted, you know, we did a great job today, we can have apples and oranges, or fruits and vegetables, that's great. You know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I finish with you yet? Mrs. Lemoine?
Do we need to make a motion to send this to the full board?
We do.
Okay. I will make a motion that we send it to the full board.
We have a motion by Mrs. Lemoine?
Second.
Second. So, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, how do you, how do you collaborate with the physical education department with this program? And I like the committee, you know, that you're forming a committee, and you're gonna come up with recommendations. But I remember when I was in, a long time ago, when I went to school, we used to have a health class. Do they still teach health?
Well, and that's, that's one of the biggest things I do with like my interns that I get at least like four times a year. So, I actually reached out to North Oak, and I'm getting those, those interns are coming even more periodic, like throughout the year. So, I like to do, what I do on that aspect is we create these flyers and go out and like, and teach and and show and explain why it's important to have that, you know. And then, when I do visit schools, I do visit and talk to some of the PE coaches to make sure we out there, we running and doing the things that we have to do.
And health standards are part of the physical education curriculum. So, all of the physical education teachers, you know, in elementary and middle, do that as a component of their physical education course. And at the high school level, there is a half-credit that they must take in health education. So, it's throughout the, it is throughout the entire curriculum.
Yeah, as long as we're collaborating with that.
Right. And even like the last set of interns we had went to Sherman High School. I think it was at the end of the school year, and we talked to a lot of the athletes. We had a whole separate, like, one of the class, a whole period, they talked about what's the importance of fueling your body, and why, and how does it break down and treat your body, and the importance of, you know, even the grains, the nuts, and fruits. And it got like very into scientific terms, like very scientific, and then, and they understand that stuff. Not a, in elementary school or middle school wouldn't really get that far into it, but, you know, and like muscle repair and things like that.
Yeah, you know, when you think of diabetes and high blood pressure and heart issues that we face in society. I had to go to a funeral this week for somebody who passed away way too soon from a heart attack. So, it's very important to me that that is taught, and, you know, the collaboration between nutrition and physical education. You know, I like that you're forming a committee, and hope you guys can come together and come up with some more inroads with our students.
Right. So, like, and I just, as an example, like something else that I implemented for all the managers this year, I said, well, because we were doing, and cost-wise, we were taking more of like canned fruit. I said, well, one, at one point, if we use canned fruit for breakfast, we get a regular natural fruit for lunch. Or if we use like an apple or an orange for breakfast, then we can do a canned fruit for lunch, but not, not twice a day. You know, and try to help us cut down like natural sugars and syrupy sugars that are in canned, in canned foods, too. So, just trying to make sure it's like real natural stuff.
Thank you, Mr. Morell. Appreciate your presentation and your committee, and looking forward to some follow-up meetings on that.
Absolutely.
So, we have a motion by Mrs. Lemoine, a second by Mrs. Rodney. Please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you.
Back to you, Mrs. Dysart.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Next item on the agenda are personnel changes, and we have Ms. Bridget with us tonight. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, the first thing I have for you are the personnel minutes, the changes for the last two weeks, and you can see that it's very short, which is a good thing.
Okay, are there any questions at this time?
Okay. The second thing I have for you tonight, I have, I gave you an orange folder, which contains the Personnel Evaluation Plan for your review. We had a steering committee, and you'll see from the memo I gave you that the Personnel Plan Steering Committee's recommendation for the 2024-2025 school year is that changes be made to the St. Bernard Parish Local Personnel Evaluation Plan based on directives from the state. These changes are pertaining to the newly adopted and mandated LEEDs Evaluation Plan. LEED stands for Louisiana Educator Advancement and Development System. The state's LEEDs Evaluation Plan is replacing the state's COMPASS Evaluation Plan. So, when you look through this 82-page document that is on the right side, the highlighted areas that you would focus on are on pages four, five, six, eight, nine, 11, 18, and 19 for any updates. But what I did was on the left side of your folder, you'll see some documents that might inform you about this new program. So, in 2010, when I was a principal, I can remember the state brought COMPASS to us. And we went through a learning year, which this year is considered a learning year for us. And what has been happening is that the administrators here, Ms. Fote, Ms. Lametta, supervisors here, all the principals, APs, and some others, instructional coaches, mentors, we went through a three-day training on LEEDs. Every year, anyone involved with this LEEDs training, anyone who'll be evaluating or supporting through observations, has to go through the training. And we don't have to just go through this three-day training, we also have to pass an assessment to be certified. So, once you do the three-day training, the next year you'll still have to do a one-day update training. So, what we're, we've learned a lot, and some, a lot of COMPASS, and a lot with COMPASS and LEEDs are similar, but there are some big changes. One of the changes is that we have a different rubric now. And the COMPASS rubric, as a principal, it was good, but it was limited. This rubric is very extensive, and it has four domains and 23 indicators. It's gonna be really helpful for beginning teachers and even veteran teachers who are looking, you know, who need to grow. And the whole reason behind an evaluation system like this, it's not a get you. You know, we don't wanna get teachers, but what we wanna do with teachers is to make them more effective. And we see that when we see our students improving. So, that's what this rubric helps them to do. The next thing that changed between COMPASS and LEEDs is that we now have a five-point scale that teachers can be scored on. Before, there was a four-point scale, and with a five-point scale, there's more room for growth. So, as a past principal, I like this also. I did give you some other charts that when you're, when you are reviewing that big document, you might wanna look at. I've included the formal observation cycle of support. And then, one of the, one of the biggest changes is the frequency of observations for teachers. So, for a new teacher who is during their first three years of teaching, they have to be observed three times. In the past, it was two times. So, now they have to go through the whole observation process three times. Per year? For, per year. Yes, per year. And it doesn't just involve somebody walking in the classroom and scoring them. It's, they have a pre-conference, they have the observation, then they have a post-conference. And another thing that changed with this is that we used to do professional growth plans, PGP's, and we would always start them at the beginning of the year. We took what they told us to do, and we, we made our professional growth plans at the beginning of the year. Now, they will not be made until the first observation cycle, observation is done, and it'll be part of the refinement area where the teacher needs to grow. And the support that follows the observations will be tied into that PGP plan. Now, for teachers who have experience and are beyond their three years of teaching, they will have one observation, one required observation. That's different. They used to have to have two. There were a few years there in COMPASS where if, if they did well the year before, did highly effective in certain areas, they only had to have one. That's gone now. So, what happens now with a teacher who has over three years' experience, if their first observation is below a 3.5, then they have to have a second observation. And then, if the, once they have the first two observations, if they average those first two observations, and it's less than a 2.5, then they have to have a third observation. So, it's a lot of observations potentially for principals. So, one of the things that is different from COMPASS, we can now have others come in who are certified, who have gone through the LEEDs training, and who have passed the assessment. They can come in and they can observe. They can kind of give us, they can support observations, and they can come in and observe. They can evaluate. They are not evaluators, but they can support evaluations. So, that's basically the changes that you will see in that document. And we're looking forward to parts of it, and we wanna make sure that we're supporting our, it's a lot. It's gonna be a lot for our administrators, but we have plans and to support them and to make this as effective as possible. So, any questions? I have a lot of homework for you. You can, lots of stuff for you to read and learn about.
Are there any questions at this time? Okay. I just had a quick question. So, if they're not evaluating, they're just there to observe, do they speak to the evaluator to let them know what?
Yes.
Okay, and there's an assessment that they're doing to, or that they're sharing with the evaluator? Is that how it's working?
Yes. And they're, we're probably gonna use them mostly as support, because a lot of those people will be like an instructional coach, or reading facilitator, people who have that knowledge of classroom strategies and content, that can help them, because that's the whole point of it.
And you see, when we set up our original system with teacher leaders, instructional coaches, the non-administrative people that provided support to our teachers, I was very opposed, to be honest, for them to do any kind of an observation which would contribute to an evaluation. Because I wanted the teachers to feel that these people were there to support them, not to evaluate them, so that they could be a little freer with them, they could discuss issues that they had to do, identify areas for growth before the actual observations and evaluations took place. But what this, you know, what this new system, which is really the old, the NIET, the National Institute of Effective Teaching, which, you know, had marketed a major evaluation system, I'll just put it that way, that was part of their model, and the state of Louisiana has incorporated that. So, for teachers with three years or less experience, because this is, this is very time-consuming on the school-based administrators, because if you look at their day, each administrator might have anywhere in the neighborhood of 30 to 40 people to evaluate. And when you're looking at these multiple observations, and with that, pre-conferences, observations, post-conferences, professional growth plans, then going back and seeing if those professional growth plans are being implemented, and if they're effective, that's, it's a great, look, it's a great support system, don't get me wrong, but it's very time-consuming. So, just think of your principal or your assistant principal. You have a parent that arrives. I'm sorry, I can't, can't speak with them, because you're doing an observation in classes, and it's very difficult to explain to people why we're not immediately responsive, but the administrators are spending the vast majority of their time where they really should be in the classroom, supporting teachers and supporting the instructional effort. So, what we have done with our non-administrator, non-administrative, school-based, and curriculum-based people is for those teachers who have three or fewer years, that third observation that they, that is required, that they will go in and do the observation in a supportive manner, but actually score, turn it over to the evaluator, who then will have the conference with the teachers in global. They'll have that one observation, and then two additional ones, and they'll work through that process. So, I think, you know, it's good. It helps, it also helps to train our future administrators, to be honest. So, if we have people who are instructional coaches, or mentor teachers, or teacher leaders, they need to do some of these things on their road to becoming an effective school-based administrator and leader. So, we're kinda, you know, we're, I'm yielding a little bit with it, and we are working our way through that process this year. And I think our instructional coaches and such, I mean, they're very talented, talented educators. And I think this will be a good program for all involved. But I want people to understand that this is an extremely time-consuming process, especially when you're trying to help people grow in their profession, very time-consuming. And while you're doing that, the kids are still having class. I mean, it's not as if, it's not as if nothing is happening at the same time. So, anyway.
Okay, are there any other questions at this time? I guess we need a motion to accept the new Personnel Evaluation Plan. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? Any discussion? More questions? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchett.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchett.
Okay. Next item's an insurance item. Mr. Rodriguez.
We're going to have consideration renewal of general liability, auto liability, and legal liability insurance, and also consideration renewal of cyber liability insurance from Mr. Clementson and Mr. Fernandez. Thank you.
Okay. As Mr. Rodriguez said, we have Mr. Richard A. Clump, Chair Services, here with us today. In your package, you have the renewal proposal for general liability, automobile liability, and educator's legal liability from LAMA, which is the consortium that we belong to currently, that, we have that insurance through. Mr. Clementson and his associates have also solicited other conventional insurance proposals. They contacted, I believe, five other insurers to try to solicit quotes, and they didn't feel that they could compete with the deal we're getting from LAMA. And if they were going to offer a quote, it would be with higher retention rates than LAMA is offering. They're offering $25,000 of a retention for us. The other insurance, I believe, weren't coming for less than, I believe, $100,000. $100,000 was the lowest retention they were offering. So, we're recommending that we renew with LAMA for the next year for these insurance. The rates have gone up about $45,000 due to that experience over the past year, but we think it's the best deal that we can get at this time, and we're recommending we do it with LAMA. All the coverages are the same as we currently have on our policies as well.
Any questions? Mr. Warner?
I'm going to make a motion that we send the consideration for renewal of general liability, auto liability, and legal liability insurance to the board with a recommendation. Can't beat the LAMA group that we're with, so.
Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Jackson, Ms. Creason.
I have a quick question, please. Okay. If it's a legal liability and professional liability, cyber is not included in this?
No, we have a separate policy. The LAMA, the LAMA coverage doesn't include cyber liability. So, but we have a separate offer for that outside of LAMA.
Okay. And even, even with the separate liability coverage with the cyber, this was the best quote that we could have gotten?
Yes.
Absolutely.
A lot of people aren't offering the cyber liability coverage, it's, because there's so much.
Exposure.
Potential exposure out there in that realm. So, a lot of companies are declining to offer that with their regular liability policies. That's why we had to go out and solicit a separate insurance policy for that.
Thank you.
So, we're going to be voting on just 4.1 right now, then we're going to, okay, cast our votes. Any more questions? Not cast our votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Now, consideration of renewal of cyber liability insurance.
As we stated, LAMA does not offer the cyber liability coverage, but we did solicit proposals, and the best, we went to about five companies, and the best, some declined. There's a lot of, as we stated early, there's a lot of exposure, a lot of companies don't want to even offer this type of coverage. But we got a premium from Travelers Casualty Insurance. The premium is slightly less than last year, went down a couple of thousand dollars. However, the coverage is slightly different for that. If you look at the coverages, everything is the same as our previous policy, except the limits on cyber crime have gone down. They're covering less, they're offering less exposure for cyber crime. So, it's going from limits of 250,000 to 100,000 on that particular aspect, but everything else is the same. The premium's going from 21,000 to 18,000 for this policy. And we're recommending we go with Travelers Casualty for premium of 18,055.
Any questions? Mrs. Iris?
So, did you say that we didn't receive any other bids, or we did receive other bids?
He solicited, oh, I missed a question.
Well, what we usually do is we go out to the company and say, this is what we've got. And they'll say, well, send me an application, or no, I can't compete with that. And mostly, what we got was, we can't compete with that. We did send a couple of other applications out, but once they got them, they declined. It's, cyber right now is just out of control. I'm sure you see it every day in the paper, you know, this one got breached, this one got breached, this one got swindled. So, companies are running scared. That's why Travelers wouldn't even offer us the 250,000 coverage this year, only 100 on the crime part.
Okay. So, we didn't receive any other to compare the price to?
Not far, but we, we got indications that this was the best deal out there, because we always give them, you've got to beat the champ.
Right.
So, had nobody even entertained.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Warner?
Mr. Clementson, if memory serves me, we, we used to pay a little bit more for this a few years back.
Right. It was in the thirties.
Thirties and forty thousand dollars, yeah.
Been able to company, company, company.
Part of what contributed to the decrease was we did change our policies locally. We do multi-factor authentication on logins and ads, so Ms. Lametta and her technology team have really implemented a lot of safeguards that made it more attractive to these companies and bolstered our security, so they have been offering us lesser premiums.
Yeah. So, in this day and age, it's a necessity. So, I'll make the motion that we send this to the full board with a recommendation.
Motion seconded by Mrs. Styes. Cast your vote, please.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is a finance committee item. Ms. Creason.
So, next up is consideration of amending the salary schedules to include the adoption of a one-time stipend compensation plan for funds appropriated by the legislature.
Okay. As you know, each year, we go to the legislature as part of the MFP, and we try to secure a permanent pay raise for teachers. We have been unsuccessful in doing that, because the legislature has continually, over the past couple of years, denied a permanent pay raise. So, they came up with, again, for the second year, a one-time salary stipend, is what they call it. Last year, they had appropriated 20, they had appropriated, I think it was about 25 million, no, more than that. They appropriated money for that, and it's, it's not a finite amount of money, it's based on the number of staff that you have in the prior year. So, what they do is, they go to our, what's called a PEP report, our employment report from the prior year, look at how many certificated positions you had, and how many non-certificated positions that you have. And then, they fund those at $2,000 per certificated position and $1,000 per non-certificated position. And they look at that and give you those amounts of money. So, on the sheet that we have for you, that top chart, on our fall of 2023 employment, our staff report, we had 626.4, because we have a couple of part-time people, certificated positions in the fall of 2023. And at $2,000 each, you see the stipend amount. And then, they also give you the retirement benefit, the employer portion, that is attributable to that stipend. So, for the certificated people, we're getting one, one and a half million. For non-certificated staff, we had identified 305 people at $1,000 each. With the appropriate retirement contribution, it came to 383,000. So, the total is $1,905,975. Now, you have to realize that, that was based on the number of positions we had last year, and we have to distribute it to the people we have this year. So, obviously, the people, a lot of people aren't the same, the number of positions, not the same. We have increased number of positions. So, what you see on the bottom piece is the amounts that we have to then supplement this locally if we want all of our employees to receive that same stipend. The state will not give us the stipends for any pre-K programs. So, all of your pre-K teachers and aides are not included in this. The only way that we have to include it, then, would be to appropriate it out of our general fund and supplement that. Right now, we have 29 certificated pre-K staff, 33 non-certificated pre-K staff. Then, in looking at the number of positions we had last year and contrasting it with this year, we have 16 additional certificated staff over what we had last year, and about 10 additional non-certificated staff. So, we estimated what that would cost us for 45 certificated employees at $2,000 each and the appropriate retirement benefits, and the 43 non-certificated staff at $1,000 each and the appropriate retirement benefits, it would be an estimated cost to our local general fund of an additional $163,443. So, if we want all of our employees, then, to get that same benefit, we will take the 1.9 million that the state is giving us, and we will have to supplement it with an additional 163,000 out of our local budget, which we will, you know, have to do the next time we come in with that revision. Now, last year, what we did with the stipend, if you remember, to cover everyone that would be working for us over the course of the year, we gave half of it out in the fall semester and half of it out in the spring semester. So, if you worked the whole year, you got the whole amount. If you worked a half a year, you only got half. But what happened is the state legislature mandated by law that it had to be totally dispersed by December 15th. So, all we can do is to see who is working and who do we hire this particular year at this time, and disperse the money to them in a one-time allocation. Anyone who is hired after that point will not receive any stipends this year. So, the date that we are proposing to disperse it will be November 4th. That'll be in the middle of two pay periods, and we'll do a separate check, because the employees tend to like that better, and they, you know, it doesn't kick in as much withholding for them. So, they'll get more of an actual amount of money in the check itself. So, if you approve this, then it will have to be, you know, it's added to our compensation plan, our salary schedules, and knowing that when we come back to revise the budget in October, when we put the technical revisions in, we will have to add in this 1.9 million coming from the state, plus an additional 160,000 or so that locally we would put up. No questions?
No questions? No? Yes, Ms. Styes.
Yeah, I would just like to make a motion that we, we adopt the salary schedules to include the one-time stipend for the, for the funds appropriated by the legislature, and then also the additional $163,443 that it will cost us locally to provide that.
Okay. So, we have a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? There being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
All right. Next up, we have consideration of amending the salary schedules to include the adoption of a one-time differentiated compensation plan for funds appropriated by the legislature.
Okay. This was another appropriation by the legislature that last year, they had appropriated 25 million dollars statewide to do the same thing with. This year, the appropriation was reduced to 17 and a half million. Now, what the State Department of Education had proposed to the legislature in this differentiated pay plan was not to give everyone the same amounts of money or the same stipend. They wanted to target certain groups of people that in, through their retention and recruitment plan. And there were four categories of people who could receive this. Now, when they appropriated the 17 and a half million, this is how they did it. They went back and they took, in the fall of 2023, last fall's employment report, and they looked for every employee statewide that had an object code of 112. That means that for accounting purposes, that object code identified classroom teacher. So, they took the total number of people statewide that were identified as classroom teachers, and divided it into the 17 and a half million that they set aside, and they came up with $289.93 per person in that total amount, which I put in here. So, then, they went back and took your individual report, our report, and saw how many people we in St. Bernard had identified in that object code, 112, as teachers, and multiplied that number by the 289.93, and our allocation, as you can see on here, is 154,218, and they added the retire, employer retirement portion to it. Now, what do we do with this 154,218, and how do we disperse this? Well, there were four categories that you could consider. The first one was stipends for critical shortage areas as identified by the state, by BESI. The only critical shortage areas they would identify were secondary math, secondary science, and special education teachers. So, if you want, if we wanted to give those particular teachers part of this, we could. That's in allowable. But no other teacher could get that. If you were science, or social studies, or English, whatever, you didn't fit into that definition of a critical shortage area. Second group were for highly effective teachers. You know, Ms. Pritchett just talked about the evaluation system, so that would have been any teacher that scored a 3.5 or above on their evaluation last school year. And some of that is very subjective, depending on what school you're teaching in and who your evaluator is. And sometimes, because of something we call BAM scores, some of our core area teachers may not score as highly as some of maybe our cultural arts teachers, who don't get BAM scores. You know, so they, in our system, we were a little bit leery about looking at highly effective teachers. The third criteria, stipends for teachers working in high-need school, defined as those with economically disadvantaged rate of 85% or higher, that you would then take it and in some way disperse it to teachers in those particular schools. And the fourth category was stipends for teacher leadership positions. And these are classroom teachers who take on a, a role of a mentor teacher, or a teacher leader, or an instructional coach. And we felt, you know, as we sat and discussed, where we felt we could disperse this money, we thought that we would propose to do it under category four, because we thought that building the leadership among our teachers was most important and would help for the advancement of our teaching corps, which will then result in the advancement of student achievement. So, we are proposing to take that money and spend $2,000 stipends to 52 of our teachers who are mentor teachers this year. Now, to be a mentor teacher in our school system, you had to have gone through you had to have gone through that LEEDs training that we just talked about, which was a multi-day training. You had to pass an assessment, a national assessment that said you understood it and you could do it. And with that, you were, you're allowed to be a mentor for new teachers who need that support. So we want to take and are asking to take those 52 mentor teachers and disperse those $2,000 stipends to them. And then with the remaining funds, we have cadres after school for teachers in their content areas. We have math, science, social studies, and English cadres, which means those teachers, they, all your middle school math teachers, will meet in a series of professional development after school, six sessions per semester. And they then unpack the standards, talk about how to best teach these things. Then they go back and they're the content leaders within their schools. So those are in each of the four core areas as well as we have a cadre, PD, professional development cadre for our special education teachers. So we want, we're proposing to pay them stipends anywhere from $500 to $1,000, depending upon the number of sessions that they attend. And that will help them to develop their skills in the curriculum area and be able to support the teachers at the schools that they're coming from. So we would like to propose that as the methodology to distribute the $154,218 that we have for differentiated pay.
So I have two questions. We already identified the 52 mentor, like that's how many we have. So we know that all of that money is going to be used.
Yes.
And then for the stipends for the, taking the professional development, that's, that's a range and it's based on if they take these classes, what happens if we don't use all of that money?
If you don't use all of the money, you can carry it over to the next year. This is one of those carryover ones that you can carry it over to the next year and do it. And if we exceed that, then what we do is for the cadres, we can set aside. We have built in some Title II funds from our federal funds or Title I funds that we are going, we want to pay them anyway.
Okay.
Because we feel that this is an extremely important professional development initiative. So we're going to use that 50,000 because when, when I sat there and figured out the number of potential teachers, I'm pretty sure that that's going to exceed the 50,000 that we're going to have left.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Ms. Harris.
Superintendent, I know the other ones have a legislative date when they have to be paid out. Do these have a date by when they have to be paid out?
No, they do not. In fact, those funds can be carried over. So what we do with the mentor teachers, it's 2,000 a year, it's 1,000 per semester. So what we do is at the end of the first semester, because when they're mentor teachers, they don't just sit down and say, well, I'm your mentor, how are things going? They have to do some observations, they have to do meetings with the teachers, they have to turn in documents. So it is, it is a very regulated activity that they have to do. And if they complete all of it, and, and some of these, you know, we use them for our teach St. Bernard candidates as well and all of that. And we use that data when we are evaluating our candidates. And that's one of the reasons we have a highly effective teacher certification program. We got the highest rating on that. This is one of the, the really guts of it, the, I guess, the peer of how we support teachers in all of these programs and then new teachers who don't necessarily have their certifications yet. So we will disperse 1,000 per semester for them. And then for the cadres, at the end of each semester, the number of sessions they have attended, then we will disperse those funds twice a year, at the end of the first semester, end of the second semester. And if by some chance we did happen to have money left over, then we could carry this funding over to the next year.
Yes, Mr. Warner.
So Ms. Voechert, it says a one-time differentiated compensation plan. So we're depending on the legislature in the spring to try to fund this again.
For the next year.
When we have a shortfall, we're facing a shortfall, right? So this might be a one and done.
Could be. But what we, you know, we have such faith in this particular program and you know how we have different sources of funding, not just our general fund, but we have federal funds as well. Under Title II is a professional development component. And we tried, you know, even before this incentive pay came out or this differentiated pay came out, we would use some of those dollars. We may not be able to pay them as much, but we do try to compensate them because this is additional work for teachers. While they're growing themselves, they're supporting new teachers, but they're growing themselves. But it doesn't just come with five minutes, let's talk. You know, it's, it's a very, again, a very time-consuming effort over the course of the year. So we try to find funds to do something for them. But you're right, Mr. Warner, I don't know what is going to happen in the '25, '26 year with what the legislature is going to do. Everybody is on pins and needles as to what the funding will look like and what's going to be cut if they do not, if they don't keep that 0.45% sales tax, that less than half a penny sales tax. That is going to be devastating to many of the programs, including education. It'll be devastating in higher education, for sure. And then, you know, there's talk about cutting personal income tax. There's talk about eliminating the inventory tax. And if all those things hit a perfect storm, we're in big time trouble.
Thank you, Mrs. Voechert.
Yes, Mr. Rodriguez.
And when you say we, you know, think this is the best way to use the money, it's yourself, that's two questions. It's yourself and how many others? And of those other people, would there be, they're not going to be getting any of this or this money where it would be a conflict of interest?
Oh, no. This is the administrative team. These are the people, our central office administrative team and our principals and assistant principals, we met with them. They're not eligible for any of this money.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
God bless you.
Thank you.
And I'll make a motion that we send this one-time differential compensation plan to the full board with a recommendation.
We have a motion by Mr. Warner, a second by Ms. White.
I'll keep my fingers crossed that we have funds to do it next year.
If there's no further questions or discussion, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Creason. Next item, for executive items, Ms. Lemoine.
Thank you, Ms. Daisart. Agenda item number 6.1 is school reports on lockdown drills. And we have Ms. Lichardi with us. Good evening.
Good evening. So once again, this year, in alignment with Louisiana revised statute 17416.16, we have implemented several key measures to ensure that students and staff are well-prepared for emergency situations. Under the guidance of the LSU Stevenson Institute, each school has updated their crisis plan to incorporate the latest safety practices and information. All school staff receive comprehensive training on their respective emergency operations plan to ensure that they're familiar with the procedures in case of an emergency. During the first 30 days of school year, each school conducted safety drills, including a lockdown drill to practice, I'm sorry, to practice the plan's components. A representative from the sheriff's department and I were present to assist the school leaders and offer support through lockdown drills. All these results are submitted to central office and documented. Overall, the drills were very successful and only a few minor concerns were noted, such as unoccupied classroom doors being open and unlocked. We heard faint noises from a few classrooms as well. Other than that, everything was very, very successful.
Thank you, Ms. Lichardi, for that report. Do we have questions from the board? Okay, well, thank you, of course. Safety and security for our students is the most important thing that we do. So thank you for giving us an update on this.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 6.2 is a consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy A, B, C, B. And we have Mr. Morales with us. Good evening.
Hello, everyone. We do have some, some more policies. All of these are updated policies, no new policies. And again, they're all based on laws that were passed usually by August 1st. If not, it'll say otherwise. But the first one is A, B, C, D, C, B qualifications for school board members. Act 204 included the requirement that school board members possess a high school diploma or its equivalent as determined by the State Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. Now, just to remind you all, in your packet of information, we have the old policy, the revised policy, and the new policy as it would be if you passed, as well as the act.
Okay. Any questions from board members on school board policy A, B, C, B? Mr. Warner?
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mrs. Daisart. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, agenda item number 6.3 is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy B, 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 C.
B, 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 C is school board member continuing education. Again, this is based on Act 198, which is a revised policy or an updated policy. Act 198 made it mandatory to include special education to the list of training and instruction for school board members. This requirement has been added to the school board member continuing education policy.
Questions from the board on policy B, 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 C?
I have a question.
Yes.
Are we going to be required to have to take additional classes, additional class, like, like hours by the Louisiana School Board Association?
No, the hours are going to stay the same, but that's one of the areas that can be included in the hours and that they are suggesting to include. So the hours that are mandated by the same revised statute were not increased.
So maybe they'll have a breakout session at the?
At the conference, you'll probably have that breakout session.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Daisart?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the new policy of B, 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 C.
We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Daisart, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number 6.4 is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy B, C, B, B.
B, C, B, B is notification of school board meetings. It's based on Act 617. Act 617 required that notice be given to any member of the public who requests it in the same time and manner as is given to members of the news media who request it. It also included a new requirement that notice be provided to the commissioner of administration in a format and manner that allows the commissioner to post the notice on the commissioner's website 24 hours prior to the scheduled time of the meeting.
Questions on policy B, C, B, B?
Who the heck is the commissioner of the news?
Ms. Voechert, you want to shed a little light on this?
I don't know why I didn't shed any light on why they did this, but we reached out to the commissioner of administration in Baton Rouge. And to be honest, right now, I can't think of the new commissioner's name. He used to be Jay Darden in the last administration. This administration, I'm not sure if anybody can help me. I'd be happy to name the person. And we reached out to him through the LSBA because we called the LS, we called the LSBA, said, what do y'all know about this? You know, sending notice to the commissioner of administration. And they said, we hadn't heard about that either, let us ask. So they called over there and the commissioner of administration's office, they were not aware of this. So they said, well, we don't have any regulations on how we would like you to do this yet. So when we do, we will let you know. So, you know, I mean, it's easy enough just to send them our agenda, but we're not certain how to make it happen. So we're waiting for guidance. And the law says, if we, you read the act, that the commissioner of administration will let us know somewhere in here. It'll be, all submissions shall be made in electronic format designated by the commissioner of administration. And it goes on to say, you know, he's going to do that. So he's got to tell us how he wants it done. So we have reached out and we are waiting for a response.
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board with a recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Creason, seconded by Mrs. White.
I have just another question.
Mr. Warner.
There's a notice regarding executive session. Is that, is that all on our agenda? Indicate a statement discussing an executive session shall indicate a statement identifying the court case number and parties relative to any pending litigation to be considered. Is that, do we include all that on our agenda?
Yes, we designate what lawsuit or court action or if it's pending litigation. And then there are other, there are other instances like personnel issues, you know, when you discuss professional competencies and such, when you give the person notice and they, you know, opt for it to be in executive session.
Okay.
So yes, we do, we do put it on the agenda.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number 6.5 is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy GBA.
GBA is dealing with contracts and compensation. It's based on Act 311. Act 311 addressed additional compensation to be paid to employees for work not specifically covered in the employee's job description. The school board is tasked with developing a uniform supplemental salary schedule for the '24, '25 school year for certified employees that covers compensation for duties performed beyond the scope of their prescribed duties and responsibilities.
Questions on GBA?
I have a question.
Mr. Warner?
Is this going to include like bus duty? And they have to be additionally compensated for?
Okay.
If they volunteer at a, you know, high school game and stuff like that?
This is a very murky law. What is supposed to happen that each individual teacher is supposed to have a job description? And if the activity is within the job description, then there is no additional compensation. If it is not within the job description, then it should be in part of your salary compensation plan, which might be, say, a stipend for coaching this team or a stipend for sponsoring this particular club or organization. In our case, the way we have looked at it, we have a collective bargaining agreement. And every year, when we adopt our salary schedule, we are also operating and adopting the contract that we have. In the contract, part of the teacher's duties, if you read a section, has to do with before and after-school duty. So they are required, there's a 25-minute period before and/or after school that is part of their job, that is in the contract. Also in the contract, all the stipends are listed for athletic competitions or sponsors or coaches, if you want to call them, choral directors, band directors, flag team, dance team, those kinds of things. There's also a section designated for voluntary incentive pay that we give an amount to each school for voluntary incentive pay. And the employees at that particular school decide how much each? And the employees at that particular school decide how much each person gets depending upon the time that they allocate to that particular activity. Now, if we would have an activity that is not covered under any of those things, then it would be, that we tell the teacher they have to do, then it would be under this particular law that we would have to then additionally compensate that student, I mean, that teacher. So, when you say, you know, collect money at a ballgame or collect tickets at the gate, the way I'm looking at it, you know, we have many volunteers that do this. We're not telling any teacher they have to do that. So, we're, you know, we're looking more closely at those kinds of things. But club sponsorships, coaching supplements, duty schedules, those are all covered under our collective bargaining agreement and already part of the teacher's compensation plan.
Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to send 6.5 G, B, A to the full board.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Warner.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Diehart.
And a quick question. When is our collective bargaining agreement dated through? Like, when would we have to start negotiating again?
I think it's June of 2027. It was a four-year agreement, and I think we did it in 2023. So, I think it expires now, you know, I'm 99% certain of that date, but it's June 30th, I think, of 2027.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor in a second. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay, agenda item number 6.6 is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy G, B, R, I, B.
G, B, R, I, B is dealing with our sick leave. It's based on Act 315. Act 315 extended the amount of leave that school employees receive for a disability caused by physical contact with a student from 90 days to one year.
Questions on policy G, B, R, I, B?
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board with a recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Creason, seconded by, was that you, Mr. Warner? Sorry. Seconded by Mr. Warner. Any further questions or comments?
I just have a question. So, in reading this, it is if you become disabled while acting in the official capacity as a result of physical contact with a student. So, how does this play into, like, workman's comp? So, they're getting a full year of sick leave pay for the physical accident?
You cannot reduce their pay. Usually, a worker's comp claim will pay you two-thirds of your salary. We allow, if employees have, say, sick leave left, we allow them to take, say, a third of a day to supplement it, so that they would be made whole. In this scenario, though, if it's a physical assault by a student against the employee, then it is a full 100% pay. They do not get any of their sick leave reduced by that at all. And it's at full pay. It wasn't 90 days, and it's extended to that year long.
But workman's comp would cover a portion of that, and we would be responsible in general funds for the rest of it.
Right, and then worker's comp, yes, correct.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion to send it to the full board, if anybody...
I'll make a motion that we send G, B, R, I, B to the full board.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mrs. White.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Rodney. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Agenda item number 6.7 is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy G, B, R, I, B, B.
So, G, B, R, I, B, B is dealing with the sick leave bank. It's based on Act 115. Act 115 addressed extended sick leave for school bus operators, teachers, and school employees, respectively. So, it used to be one bank. Now, they're breaking into three different banks. So, that's what that's based on. Also, Act 115 revised each guiding statute to include provisions that an employee could donate directly to another employee in an amount not to exceed one-half of the donating employee's accumulated leave as calculated at the beginning of the school year. Lastly, Act 115 also includes a provision that at least 90% of the leave balance in the bank be retained from one year to the next.
Okay. Thank you for that. Questions from the board on G, B, R, I, B, B?
I'll make a motion that we send this to the full board with a recommendation.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Creason.
May I make a comment?
Please.
Because I'd like to just say, we've been having this sick leave bank for quite a few years, and it's through our collective bargaining agreement, and it has some stipulations in state law. And we have allowed our employees to join the sick leave bank. They have to have a certain number of sick leave available. You know, they can't, like, expend it all and put it in the bank and have none left. So, they can donate currently up to two days a year of their sick leave in the bank. But there's one thing, and the reason I'm saying this is that when we first set this up, unless the law has changed or the retirement system regulations have changed, we were told by the retirement system that when they donate, when someone donates the sick leave, it's as if those are used days. And what happens when you retire? The retirement system does not ask the school district, "How many sick days does so-and-so have left?" And because they take the remaining sick days and they convert it to service credit, which may up your retirement. Well, school systems and agencies who belong to these retirement systems have all different regulations. You could, you could give somebody 30 sick days in his last few years. And if he was allowed then to convert all of it to service credit in the retirement system, that would up the liability of the retirement system. So, what happens when you retire is they do not ask, "How many sick days do you have left?" Like, every teacher, a nine-month teacher, gets 10 sick days a year. So, for example, if you work 30 years before you retire, you could accumulate for retirement purposes, and you didn't use any, 300 sick days. So, the retirement system will ask us year by year, "How many sick days have the person used or has the person used?" And they just accumulate year by year what that person has used and put it against what they consider the maximum. So, we give, in our school system, to more veteran people more than 10 days a year. But those additional days we give them don't necessarily, they don't get to really use it for any kind of a retirement benefit. I know I might be getting in the weeds with this, but what we'd like to tell people, that we're being told, that we were told by the retirement system, when you donate your sick days, it is sick days used. And when we report at the end of the year, "How many sick days have you used?", we have to report them as used. So, you have to knowingly, when you donate to somebody, know that that is what you're doing. Now, unless the retirement system changes their regulations, you know, we don't make the rules. We just report the way they have us report. So, I just wanted to clarify that, because some people with this law are more apt to donate or want to donate directly to a person rather than the bank. So, if your coworker is going through a difficult time, whether it's a surgery or extensive treatment, chemotherapy, or the loss of a loved one, you might wanna donate to that person and not directly to the bank for it to be used as per the bank's regulations. So, that was, I'm assuming, the impetus to change the law and to put this in to effect. Yes?
So, I wanna understand that at least 90% of the leave balance shall be retained in each account of the bank from one school year to the next. Does that mean that you can only use 10% each year?
That's what it looks like, like, you can't wipe it out. So, you can't...
Not like you can wipe it out. You can't, it looks like you can use lots of...
They wanna keep the sick bank viable and not wipe it out each year. This is gonna be one of those feel-your-way-through-this, because we're gonna have to now separate in our sick leave bank into three sections. And if people wanna donate to a specific person, see what that would entail, and probably try to help that person, like, calculate for that person how much they can really do and actually get it to that person, retaining the percent that must be retained. And that's gonna take a little back-and-forth discussion, you know? Again, Ms. Harris, I don't make the rules.
I'll make the motion to move G, 6.7, G, B, R, I, B, B, complicated sick leave policy to the full board.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Creason, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Agenda item number 6.8 is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy J, G, C.
J, G, C is dealing with suited health services. It is based on Act 161. Act 161 required non-complex health procedures be prescribed by a physician licensed in Louisiana or other state from the United States. Previously, the prescriptions had to be from physicians licensed in Louisiana or an adjacent state. So, it just opened up to all states instead of just adjacent to Louisiana.
Okay. Questions on policy J, G, C? Ms. Boj, anything you wanna add to this one? Nope.
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay.
I'll motion it to the full board.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr...
6.8, J, G, C.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mrs. White. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number 6.9 is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy J, G, C, B.
J, G, C, B is dealing with our immunizations. It's actually based on two different acts, but they both deal with immunizations. Those are Acts 460 and 674. The immunizations policy has been revised to reflect revisions from both of those acts. Act 460 added language stating that teachers or administrators may not distinguish between students based on whether or not they have received vaccinations. The following acts are specifically prohibited but not limited to determination of eligibility for athletics or extracurricular activities, allowing or denying participation inside or outside of the classroom, issuance of surveys related to vaccination status, and organizing seating arrangements. Secondly, Act 674 revised a statute to prohibit requiring a student to receive a COVID-19 vaccination as a condition of enrollment or attendance.
Thank you. Questions from the board on revisions to the policy J, G, C, B?
I also move that we, that we send it to the full board.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Ms. Diehart, seconded by Ms. Creason. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you. Agenda item number 6.10 is the consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy J, G, C, D.
J, G, C, D is administrative, administrative medication. It's also based on two acts, Act 161 and Act 378. You'll see some similar things to what we've talked about previously in 6.8. But the administrative of medication policy has been revised to reflect provisions in Act 161, which changed the language, which said prescriptions must be from physicians licensed in Louisiana or adjacent states to in Louisiana or any other state in the United States. Also, Act 378 also required a policy be adopted on the use of naloxone or other opioid antagonists. The act also defined trained school employees or other than the nurse who can be authorized to administer naloxone in emergencies.
Thank you. Questions from the board on J, G, C, D? We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Creason, seconded by Mrs. Rodney. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Last but not least, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're fine. Consideration of adopting the revision of school board policy J, G, C, F, A.
J, G, C, F, A is behavioral health services for students. If you remember, in July's meeting, this was first introduced. But they added, this actual policy has been around for a long time. However, they changed it to A. It used to be J, G, C, F, now it's J, G, C, F, A. But they just kinda revised it a little more. So, Act 745 includes several changes reflected in the recently recoded policy, Behavioral Health Student Support for Students. If you look at it, there were just some cleanups, things that they added to it, which are now reflected in the policy as well.
Okay. Questions on policy J, G, C, F, A?
I'll just motion send it to the full board, J, G, C, F, A.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. Rodriguez. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes nine zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful night.
You too.
Okay, agenda item number 6.12 is the consideration of adopting the 2024 adjusted millage rates determined at reassessment. Mr. Fernandez, welcome back.
Okay, normally, the board will levy their, add the law millages at their May meeting to be presented to assess over June. But since this is a reassessment year, this has been delayed as we go through reassessment process. As you know, the board has, the school board, the school system has five current millages, and they have to be assessed, levied every year to be assessed so that property tax bills can be sent out. In a reassessment year, which occurs every four years, the state goes through a process, and the assessment goes through a process of reassessing properties in the parish and adjusting millage rates to a level where they are revenue-neutral, which means they generate the same amount of revenue that they did in the previous year. So, this year, our, after reassessment, the tax valuation of property went up slightly. So, our millages were reduced approximately 0.8, actually, 0.89 mils in total to adjusted rates. And that is the first resolution as before you, 6.12. This adopts the adjusted millage rates, which is required by law, and it'll levy millages. So, actually, what we're doing is we're adopting the adjusted millage rates, which bring the millage rates down to a revenue-neutral basis. So, this is the first resolution. It's the five millages, our constitutional millage, our three operating millages, and the maintenance millage that we have, and the adjusted rates that we are required to adopt by law. So, that is presented for your consideration.
Questions for Mr. Fernandez? Comments? Ms. Boj, anything you need to add?
Just that this first one, this adjustment, must be made by law. The second one that we're gonna look at has some discretion. So, the first one that we have to do is make the adjustment as proposed.
Question?
Motion that we send adjusting the 2024 millage rates determined by the reassessments to the full board.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mrs. Creason. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Okay. Agenda item number 6.13 is the consideration of adopting the resolution setting forth the 2024 adjusted millage rates determined at reassessment. 2024 adjusted millage rates determined at reassessment and rolling forward to millage rates not exceeding the maximum authorized rates. Mr. Fernandez?
Okay. As part of reassessment process, after you adopt the adjusted millage rates, the board has the option of going and reassessing and increasing them to the prior year's millage rates and to gain the increase in the taxes from that increase in assessed value. And that's what the second resolution does. It shows the adjusted rate, which is the first column of numbers, and the other, the roll-forward rate, which is the 2024 levy, which would be going back to the millage rates that we are authorized for, the maximum millage rates the board is authorized to assess. So this is an option to the board. We're required to advertise and hold a public hearing before the adoption of this particular resolution, and that has been duly advertised in the St. Bernard Voice and the Advocate Times-Picune for a public hearing to be held at the regular meeting on September 24th. So our recommendation is that you send this to the full board with no recommendation pending the public hearing, then the board can make a decision about adopting this millage, this resolution.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Fernandez? Ms. Isar?
Mr. Fernandez, if you would, could you give us the total amounts for the regular board meeting for our?
The total amount of mills? Well, the.
Adjusted rate versus the levy in 2024.
The adjusted rate is 41.22 mils, and the roll-forward rate would be 42.11 mils. It's a little less than one mil increase.
And how, can you give us a total dollar figure?
The amount of revenue that would be generated from the increase would be 415,000, almost $416,000, $415,794.
Okay.
And 63 cents.
That's what I was looking for. Thank you. I would move that we send this to the board, full board, with no recommendation until the public hearing.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor by Ms. Isar.
Second.
Mr. Warner? Seconded by Mr. Warner. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes 9-0.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lemoine. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. All right, next item, Superintendent's notes. Ms. Votchay?
Okay, just a reminder again of the public hearing, which will be at the beginning of our regular meeting in two weeks. Prior to our regular meeting, we will hold a public hearing on the millage resolution set forth for 2024. We also, at the regular meeting, as I do each September, is just give a student count as of that particular day in relation to what we had last year versus this year. So we will be closer to the October 1 count, but not exactly at that point, but we'll give you some estimated figures of what we have at that given time. Also, just want to say that, you know, it's been a rough couple of days, and hopefully the next two days will not bring any kind of misery to anybody here in St. Bernard or really around the state of Louisiana. We have spent the last two days, our maintenance department and our custodians, taking all of our equipment and our things which are outside, securing them, bringing them in, making sure there's nothing that will get tossed around by this storm that is heading this way, or at least a portion of it heading this way. While we were having class, our custodial crew was making sure that had happened. We dismissed today, beginning about a half hour early at 2:00, with the high school, Rowley and Smith Elementary, at 2:00, followed by the other middle schools and the other elementary schools, and that worked very well. We will be closed tomorrow, and we will be closed on Thursday. We made the decision to close on Thursday based primarily on a conference call with the National Weather Service, who advised me that when I specifically asked that question about wind gusts for Thursday morning, even though they felt certain the storm would be past us, it's a fast-moving storm, and that Thursday will most likely look like a very nice day, but that wind gusts would be prevalent in the parish through 8:00 a.m. on Thursday morning. And at that point, we felt it was not safe to put our school buses on the road at 6:00 and 6:30 in the morning with the potential of having an accidental problem with the kids on board. So that was the primary reason for not having classes on Thursday. But we would ask parents, you know, sometimes our little ones get a little tense in these situations, so hopefully, over the next two days, spending more quality time with our families, maybe play a few board games or read a book, you know, and get to have some good activities while this is happening around us. And I know that our staff, our teachers, and the rest of our staff and our bus drivers will be there to welcome our kids back on Friday morning. Okay?
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Votchay, and just thank you also for keeping a close touch with the National Weather Center and keeping abreast of what was going on as far as our weather and also protecting our children and our employees and to keep them safe during this period of time.
And I do want to say, you know, I've had a lot of experience over the years
Yes.
with these parish-wide storm preparations and such, and I do want to say that we're very, very fortunate in St. Bernard Parish to have a very good community team. You know, when we look at the parish president and the council and the sheriff's department and the school system and all of our representatives, when these types of things come up, everyone works together, and the communication is very good, and John Ram does an excellent job as the parish's, you know, in the parish office of emergency preparedness, coordinating all of this, and I just want to give him a few kudos to say the great work that he's done to coordinate it with all of the other agencies and the people who are involved. So we're very fortunate in St. Bernard to have such a good team of people looking out for all of the residents.
Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Anyone else? Okay, well, on behalf of the board, we want to wish everybody a safe next couple of days and God bless, and hopefully, everything will be fine to open school on Friday. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting's now adjourned. Thank you and good night.